All right, we were just in the midst of doing our roll call. I was at Councilman Harry.
Here.
Thank you. Councilwoman Smallwood.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Ferguson.
Here.
And Councilwoman Jones is here at seven in attendance.
Council President.
Councilwoman.
President.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes, since you were not recording when you first, when you called Ms. Easton, I think you need to put, let the records reflect that she's present.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson.
You're welcome.
All right. Is there emotion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ferguson. All right. Is there any discussion? I do have one thing I need to bring to the agenda that I'm sorry, but I just clearly forgot, not really forgot, but just kind of left off the agenda and that was the Councilman Williams ordinance concerning Juneteenth. I'd like to add that to the agenda. Any other discussion?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilman Harry. Councilwoman Easton, she had her hand up.
Yeah, the two pieces of the legislation where you have for the resurfacing, should that be considered under legislation for May, since no public hearing was held for those pieces of legislation?
Well, there was a discussion with the city manager and the attorney concerning legislation or legislation in this and at this nature, being that since it's already been presented in a public hearing with the budget, it's something that's, the monies that are being used are monies that have always been in a budget to be used. And when we did the budget this year, it was discussed then that they were already budgeted items that the attorney kind of felt that maybe we didn't need to do all of the formalities of a public hearing. The city manager, Mr. George, would you like to elaborate on that for Councilwoman Easton, please?
Yeah, I think you said it perfectly. Kevin was simply saying that because the legislation went before the public in the form of a public hearing, it had the hearings in open when you all went through the budget and then the council approved the budget. That in itself really was the process. These monies were specifically delineated for the paving of Ward Three Streets and for the paving of the parking lot. So it wasn't kind of a general line item for paving that we then decided what it would be. It was specifically called out for the parking lot and that's the use of the money that we're proposing. So the city attorney didn't feel like another public hearing was warranted since the public has already had a chance to weigh in on repaving of the parking lot and of Ward Three Streets.
Can I follow up? But our normal process is that we do, since these are two separate, okay, let me back up. I know that in general, we approve a budget and we approve monies to be done in a budget in general. But then we also have public hearings for specific legislation that's spending specific dollars for certain items, which these two items are doing. So I don't, I hear what you're saying. I don't understand why we're circumventing the process that we normally follow.
I think the thought talking to Kevin is that you did specifically have hearings directly on me because you're asking for money specifically for repaving the parking lot. So it's not like you put money in a capital line item for repaving and then your, the citizens are fully aware that the council, that the city was prepared to spend seventy-five thousand dollars to repave the parking lot. There are public hearings to that effect and the council voted to approve it. So that was Kevin's point that he didn't feel was necessary. The council can decide otherwise and we can push it to May if you all decide to do that.
Thank you.
Council President.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
Did this request go out for IFP? Do we get bids on these people?
Now, we're, we're piggybacking off of the county's contract, which is something that our purchasing allows us to do.
Does that answer your question, Councilwoman Smallwood?
Yes, it did.
Thank you. Councilwoman Easton, she has her hand up.
When would this work be scheduled to be done?
Well, hopefully as soon as, yeah, as soon as you all give the approval, hopefully in the next several weeks, we would obviously have to coordinate the work with the election. We clearly are not going to have construction underway on or about May third for the in-person portion of the election. So if the work couldn't be completed before the election, then we would schedule it for immediately following the election. So as not to disrupt anyone that was coming to the building for election purposes.
All right.
Madam President.
I'm sorry, Mr. Councilman Harry.
Yes, I, I'm in the same, I'm of the same mind thought as Councilman Easton. Why are we circumventing this process? The whole thing about the public hearing was so the citizens can see clearly what we're doing. Now, you're saying that because we voted on a, a budget that had hundreds and hundreds of lines of information that the citizens know what we're doing, that isn't fair to the citizens. The whole thing was to let the citizens know what we're spending, putting it out there for them so they can see what we're doing, what vendors we're using, how much it's going to be. We don't even know how much it's going to be. I mean, you're just pulling this out here. I mean, because it says a hundred and seventy-five thousand or whatever it says in the budget. That's what it is. I don't think it's fair. And that's, and the whole purpose of the public hearing was to let people know what we are doing and letting people have a say on what we're doing. And to sit here and try to find a loop, that's a loophole. A loophole, which I don't, I don't agree with because the budget is one thing and who we actually spending money with is another. That's what the citizens want to know, what we were spending and who we were spending it with and them being able to have a say on the legislation that we're bringing forth and the money that we're spending. And I think it's a disservice to the citizens to try to sneak this through this way.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Harry. I just see it as a, it's not being snuck through, but it, the resolution clearly has the, the the cost and the what the vendor went through the city and looked to see how much it will cost. There's a proposal. He has a proposal and then there's a resolution has the name of the company that's on there on both both pieces of legislation. Councilwoman Ferguson, I'm sorry.
Okay. I understand what the city manager is saying. However, I would have to agree with my colleagues, Councilman Harry and Councilwoman Easton. I mean, you know, I do agree that the money was put in there, but I mean, I'm just seeing it, you know, since I've received the package. And so I think that it should be pushed back to May and go through the features that we normally do, go through with new resolutions.
All right.
Council President.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes, I agree with my other colleagues and I don't think we should be circumventing anything. So if we have the process in that we look at the that we have the citizens look at the resolutions at a public hearing, then that's what should happen. Let's not circumvent anything.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson. That sounds like a consensus to me for people have, council persons have agreed, Councilwoman Easton, Councilwoman Ferguson, Councilman Harry and Councilwoman Wilson. That's would be a quorum for us. So these two pieces of legislation will go to a public hearing, which will probably be looks like Tuesday, April thirteenth. So I'll, we'll table these until then.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, now back to adopting the agenda. So that leaves us with the personnel manual and an ordinance to establish Juneteenth Day as a City of Glen Arden holiday. Any other discussions on the agenda? All right, hearing none. I'll take the vote for adopting the agenda. Councilwoman Easton.
Yes.
Councilman Harry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
Yes, with the changes.
Thank you. Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Could you tell me again what, what legislation will be on the agenda now?
An ordinance to amend the personnel manual and, and ordinance to establish Juneteenth Day as a City of Glen Arden holiday.
Okay, so well, we have a question. Do we ask a question before we vote to adopt the agenda? Because I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I'm not understanding what Juneteenth Day, the, the
This is why it's on the agenda to discuss it in the work session.
Oh, okay. So you're saying we'll put it on the agenda so that we can discuss it?
In this work session. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then I'll say yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ferguson.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Jones, yes. That's seven in agreement. All right. So now we will move to the ordinance oh five to amend the personnel manual. This will be the second, coming up will be the second reading. Any on the twelfth, it'll be the second reading. Any questions concerning the personnel manual? The changes, let's see, I think Ms. Schultz or the city manager, I think this personnel manual has been updated with all the changes. Mr. George, would you like to elaborate on that, please?
Yes, ma'am. There weren't a tremendous number of changes after the last meeting. We did make a few minor edits. One of them, we went through and we, Department head is, is kind of capitalized in all places. And there are a few minor other changes. I was trying to bring up my copy. Unfortunately, the one I had doesn't have the change. If Karen's on the line, she also has a copy. But like I said, the changes were very minor. It was what the council had asked us to do in the last session to clarify some of the language.
All right. Any questions from the council? So hearing none. Ordinance zero five twenty twenty-one will come to the floor. Now, this ordinance, an ordinance to establish Juneteenth Day as a, as a City of Glen Arden holiday by Councilman Williams. Would you like to elaborate on that, Mr. Williams?
Yes, it's been a minute around the municipalities that we recognize Juneteenth Day as a holiday. We have African-American communities recently, one recently in Prince George's County from our heights just adopted it. And you had a white, predominantly white community on Eastern Shore, Pocemo adopted it. And there's others that have too, but those are just a couple of examples and using the language that those representing this for this city as the history of this city is African, history, historical African-American city that we recognize our lineage and that we take this day as others of and recognize it as a city holiday. That concludes my presentation.
There any questions from the council? Councilwoman Ferguson.
When you say city holiday, are you saying that is this a a day with, in the city that we're recognizing, maybe we have some activities or things like that, or they're actually, it goes over into being a holiday, a paid holiday for the employees or exactly what do you say?
Whatever. My recommendation would be a paid holiday, but it, it would be something, if the council don't wish that, the majority of the council don't wish that, then I would take a, a day of recognition that we can recognize and have a program with, because we have never, as long as I'm been on a council, may have done any recognition of Juneteenth Day in the city.
Thank you.
Council President.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes, I'd like to know if he's making this, and he wants to make this an ordinance, which is a law. So is there, are the other holidays that are celebrated in the city, are they laws as well? Or are they just mentioned in the personnel manual?
At some point in time, there had to be a, a law establishing a special ordinance or ordinance establishing holidays at that time. In the past, there was a, I remember when we changed the charter in the past in nineteen ninety-four, we took adopt, at that time, we just did a wholesale adoption of holidays that the federal government had. So I don't know what has since been, since I wasn't on the council or mayor, but that's what we did when we changed the charter in nineteen ninety-four. So they, they took it from the charter and then put it in the code personnel man.
Can you tell me where that's located, please?
Can I tell you what, ma'am?
Where, what you just said, where that's located, where I can find it?
The holidays in the, in the personnel man you are.
Oh, I thought maybe you knew. That's why I was asking for direction.
I, I don't know exactly where it is.
Councilwoman Wilson, are you, are you finished with your questioning?
Yes, I'm done.
Thank you. Right. Any other questions from the council concerning this ordinance? Councilwoman Ferguson.
I guess my thing is, okay, so when I was asking again about whether it was just a day of recognition versus a paid holiday. And when I say that recognition, say we have Glen Arden Day, you know, it's usually on a Saturday. It's not, the employees don't have to either participate or nor do they have to come to the activities. So it's either or. So when are we going to decide which one is going to be?
This will be the first reading. So it had a public hearing or did it take it off the public? I can't remember. Madam President. Did it have a public hearing?
Yes, it did.
Yes, okay.
March sixteenth.
Yeah. So that's, that can be, it can be done now. And if the majority of the people don't want it at all, it doesn't matter what it is, Ms. Ferguson. So the issue is, there needs to be consensus. Do majority of the people would like to recognize June fifteenth, sixteenth, Juneteenth. And if they do, then how would you like to recognize it? My suggestion is to make it a holiday. Like, am I okay? That's my recommendation, but I'm willing to take any other recommendations. If it's just a day that we going to have a program or what have you, recognize it, I can accept that too. But other municipalities to include majority, majority, majority and majority minority are making it a holiday for their city. Does this answer your question, Mr. Ferguson?
It does. Thank you.
Okay, so I guess at this juncture, maybe we should take a consensus to find out, you know, if we want this to be a holiday. Okay. All right, so I'll take the vote for consensus, for this to be a holiday in the City of Glen Arden. And I guess we'll determine on a second, well, consensus whether it'll be a paid holiday or just a day we celebrate. Let's find out first if we, if council wants this as a holiday. Councilwoman Easton.
Yes.
Councilman Harry.
Abstaining.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
Yes.
Councilman Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
I will abstain from this too, because I'm, I'm not sure about it being an ordinance. I have I have some hesitancy on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ferguson. Councilwoman Ferguson.
I'm thinking, I'm
Oh, I'm sorry. So sorry.
Let me pass for a minute.
And Councilwoman Jones. Yes.
Madam President, before you finish out the roll call, I just want to make a comment right quick.
Council, Councilman Harry.
Yeah, because I'm not sure what's, I read the legislation. I'm not sure what it's doing. It's saying we're supposed to look into making Juneteenth holiday. So either it's going to say we're making the Juneteenth holiday or we're not. Also, did this go through the attorney? Do we have to do this? Could we just, could you add it to the personnel manual? I mean, it's just a lot of questions out there for me where I can't make a conscious decision one way or the other. And again, if the, if the council is saying, making it, if the council agrees to make it a paid holiday, again, where is that coming from in the budget? You know, I mean, right now the budget is set. I mean, we want to have another paid holiday. So you're adding a liability to your payroll. You know, the payroll was voted on based on the current holidays that we had. So I'm just saying, there's a lot of questions in there. For me, I'm not sure reading the resolution doesn't do what I think you wanted to do, but that's neither here nor there. I'm just saying, I'm just confused with the whole process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harry. I understand, like Mr. Williams indicated, this is the first reading. If the council agrees that they want to have this as a holiday, I believe that we can send it to the attorney and have him vet it for legal sufficiency to answer any questions concerning whether it should just be in the personnel manual. Does it need to be an ordinance?
Madam President, ma'am.
Councilman Harry.
Then why are we even making this? Why is this consensus even going on? Why don't we just wait until we have a work session company? We have a public meeting coming up that's going to be the first reading. Then we can get everything we need to decide on then and make any changes that we need to make. I'm not sure why we're doing, why we're doing a roll call now to get the consensus on whether it's going to be a holiday or not. If you got a first reading, you can make the change after you had a first reading. Did we make a holiday? Or as Ms. Ferguson said, maybe a Saturday recognition day or whatever.
Just to get the, to get the feel of the council to find out what, I mean, if they really want to explore this, this is what the consensus is for me. Yeah, then we would, like I said, it's the first reading. We could send it to the attorney. By that time, it comes back around for the public hearing. It'll be back to the council and you all will have the information you need to make the decision.
Once I hear from the attorney, I can, I can make a, let me just say pass, pass. I just give, do pass, pass until I hear from the attorney. Versus abstaining. I just do two passes.
Councilwoman Smallwood, you passed.
I'm going to make a statement. The reason why I'm passing is because I don't have this legislation in my agenda. I haven't had the chance to read it. I can't vote on something that I haven't read, so I'm going to pass.
Thank you, Councilwoman Smallwood. Councilwoman Ferguson.
Okay, I would just like to say while I'm not against the June tenth and questions, my questions were answered as I asked them, but there's still a lot of questions. And so I would have thought that this being an ordinance and one that would affect the budget, one that would affect payroll, as was indicated, that it was ran past the attorney. I mean, it's a lot more involved than just saying that because if we say yes, then, you know, it's a lot involved. Money involved this. I think we should have everything written clarity and everything, and then we can go ahead. So I would have to pass, pass because I'm not satisfied with the details. But again, like I said, I'm not opposed to having that. I just need more clarity on exactly, it's just a lot of questions about you know, what's, you know, how it's going to be. Think we should have it on the table when, when it's presented. It should, every, all the details should be there. We should not have to ask, is there this is a holiday or is this a recognition? We should know, you know, what line of budget is coming and everything like that. So I just think it's not complete. So I'm pass, pass.
All right, thank you. So Madam President. I'm sorry, Ms. Councilwoman Wilson, just one second. Thank you. I would ask this, that since we, since we are going to address the attorney with this concerning this matter, would all of you that have questions, so that I could compile the questions in a way to present them to the attorney so that we can ask all of the questions, so that if you have a question, would you submit it to me so that I can put them all together in an email and then I'll submit that email to you, to the entire council and the attorney, asking the questions concerned, to make sure everybody's questions get answered.
I would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes, the, what my colleagues have said makes good sense. So I'd like to change my consensus to pass, pass as well. Because we do not have all the information that we need to really make an intelligent decision.
And so once again, I would ask all council members, if whatever your question is, please send me the question so I can send the attorney one email with the concern so that he can address those for, and we ensure that everybody's concern is addressed.
And, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Smallwood.
Can you make sure that I get a copy of this ordinance in my mailbox?
Sure. Okay, so
Council President.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Wilson, you, yeah.
Yes, and I like, I would like to ask if, if legislation that we come up with, could it be vetted by the attorney prior to us having legislation that we come up with, could it be vetted by the attorney prior to us having, um, these meetings? Because, um, apparently it was not, it didn't go past the attorney. And here, we, you know, we were taking a census on something that hasn't been vetted.
Okay.
I would, I would just ask that legislation be, be vetted past the attorney first.
Oh, most of the legislation that, um, that I, um, get, it does go to the, the, in fact, the two pieces of legislation that were earlier, that was, uh, vetted by the attorney. Uh, but Mr. Williams submitted this one, and I didn't, uh, I, I assumed that, um, which may.
This is the one, this is the one I'm speaking of, yes, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Okay. Okay, so we did the personnel manual, we did the, um, personnel, you come to the floor, Mr. Williams will go to the attorney. All right.
Uh, excuse me, Madam President?
Councilwoman Wilson?
As a result of, of, of us having to, um, send out questions to the attorney and all like that, can this piece of legislation wait until, uh, next month?
No, it's the first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, it's first reading.
Thank you. All right, um, that concludes our legislative, legislative per, uh, portion of this meeting. Uh, we'll move right in. I received the mayor's report. Mayor Estes, you have fifteen minutes.
Thank you, Madam President. In reference to the, um, report, I just wanted to ask you if you want to, in lieu of time, do you want to just, because people have had the opportunity to read it, uh, if they had any questions, if we just want to just go through it that way? And if not, uh, we'll move on.
Okay, does any council person, that's fine with me, Mayor Estes, uh, does any council persons have any questions concerning the mayor's report?
Ms. Jones?
Count, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Eason?
Yeah, I don't have a question, but I do have a, um, follow-up status. Um, I know in your report, you mentioned that the, the Vias were contacting me regarding the site map, but, but we've actually moved forward from that point. Me and Mr. George were actually working through the site map. So we can't get back to them until we go through each one of those areas of the site map and identify which one of those areas has content and which one does not have content. And then that information will be given back to Revis to figure out what information needs to be moved over to the new location. So we're actually walking through the site map right now. So I think, once again, your report said that they needed to meet with me, so we're a little bit further along in what your report says.
Okay, I, I can write a brief update, but if you want to forward me a more robust update, can you email it to me?
It's gonna pretty much, I'm sorry, it's gonna pretty much be what I just said, it's basically.
Right, I was writing notes, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, okay, but I did notice that in the report, we moved a little bit further along in that. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Council President?
Councilwoman Smallwood?
Uh, Mayor, I see you still have the information in your report about annexation. Last month, we asked you to give us the information on it, annexation, you said you would have it to us by the middle of the month. We are now into the first week in April. When will we get this, uh, get this information?
Uh, well, thank you for asking. I know I have not been able to meet your expectations. Uh, but I do have been working on the report, however, it's not where I'm ready to release it to the council. So if you can, uh, again, bear with me for another month, hopefully I'll have it before the end of my term.
Uh, well, can you give me what you have?
Uh, sure, but not tonight.
Well, can I get it by Friday?
Sure.
All right, so I expect it to be in my box by Friday, thank you.
Madam President?
Councilman Herring?
Let me just say for the record, I did not receive the mayor's report, so I'm not sure what you're talking about, so. When did, when was it sent out?
It was sent out early this afternoon.
And it's on agenda this, okay, so you got it early this afternoon, you have one there that you did not receive it, so you're letting it presented anyway?
Councilman Herring?
Is that what you're saying?
Uh, yes, that is what I'm saying.
So, so you sent it out early this afternoon and you're expecting us to have gotten it and received it and read it by seven o'clock, or seven thirty, or whatever that is, about today? When we have, when all other reports we get earlier, and we have at least two days to review them. If I, if I, if I had known earlier, I would, I would have notified you that I did not get the report. Because I had not seen the report.
Considering that the council clerk is out, a lot of things are, are a little behind, Councilman Herring, if you would just bear with us until we can, um, get those, those issues straight, when those issues are straightened out, the, the reports will, uh, be, uh, more, uh, on time.
It isn't about it being on time, it's about me getting it at all, because I haven't gotten a report.
Well, I, when I, I sent the report to you in an email, uh, around five twenty-eight this afternoon, when I tried to send you something else, you had shut down your emails, so, um.
It shouldn't, that, shouldn't I keep me from getting, because I sent that email, shouldn't I keep me from getting a report?
All right, Councilman Herring, thank you very much, thank you.
So, yeah, so please make sure I get my email, I told you, I, my, I cannot get city emails on my work, on my job. So use my AOL email address, it will not accept any emails from the.
You've never told me that.
I told you that over and over again.
No, you have not, sir, this is the first time I'm hearing this.
This is not the first time, I've told you that over and over again.
Thank you, Councilman Herring. The next is the city manager's report, Mr. George?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. George, before you get started, I do want to make a, a clarification. I said that the public hearing was going to be on, uh, Tuesday, uh, well, I guess that's the third, Tuesday the thirteenth, but the public hearing will, um, let me look at that again. All right, I'm sorry, Mr. George, go ahead.
So we have, um, we're ninety-nine percent finished with the budget. We're just going through some minor editorial changes to, um, to the new formatting, uh, Leah has been doing a fantastic job. Basically, it's, it's a much better looking book, it, it really looks like a budget book now. So she's been playing with how the divider pages go out, but the numbers are in and done. Uh, we will have that to you all digitally, um, tomorrow. Um, if you would like a hard copy, uh, just send me an email and we can put a hard copy in your box as well. Uh, but that will be out tomorrow. Um, so that's taken up a lot of our time, we've also been coordinating with the election, the Board of Elections on their efforts. Uh, we're not doing, kind of doing the work or making the decisions, but we are providing staff support, um, when they need it, and so that's taken up some of our time. And then we've also been looking at the American Rescue, um, Act, and how that's going to affect the city and the monies that we will get from that, and kind of looking for additional guidance. There's been a discussion, uh, among some of the city managers as to whether or not we want to pull in together and get a consultant to work with all of us to help us spend that money. We will probably be getting somewhere around three and a half million dollars. Uh, the initial allocation was five point one three, but there is a clause that says that, um, no municipality under fifty thousand people can get more than seventy-five percent of their pre-COVID budget. So if you take our twenty FY twenty budget, you want to buy by seventy-five percent, you get somewhere around three point four, three point five million, um, is the allocation that we will most likely get. We won't know exactly what that is until, uh, the feds do their final calculation and let us know. So that's the amount of money we're expecting. Six, you know, six months, um, I think they're kind of saying you'll probably get the first allocation, the first tranche in the next two to three months, and then you'll get the second, uh, set of money, six months to a year later. So again, the details are rolling out slowly, uh, but once we learn more about it, then we will start putting together some thoughts on how the city can best allocate and, and, um, leverage that, that's a lot of money. And it'd be great to try and how we can leverage all of that money, but right now, the, um, the information has been very, very slow to come out from the treasury. Um, as to what you can use the money for, there's going to be a lot more reporting, um, a lot more than what the county required for the CARES Act. So we're really waiting to see what the feds are going to want from all of us. But as soon as that, you know, we're kind of tracking that daily, we're, I'm checking with MML and my peers, as soon as that information comes out, uh, we will definitely provide some summary information to you all, uh, right away. And that's my report, if there's any questions you have on it, I feel free to ask, thank you, ma'am.
Right, thank you, Mr. George, is there any questions for Mr. George?
Yes, Madam President, I have a question.
Councilwoman Wilson?
So, Mr. George, um, so am I, um, I want to know about the cable. Why isn't the cable up yet as far as the meetings, the recorded meetings being presented on that?
Uh, we're still waiting on the contractor, I've been, um, going back and forth, he said, we had a meeting, um, a week and a half ago, and he was going to provide me some additional data and some more pricing. Um, and I have not heard from him, uh, since he and I met a week and a half ago. So I'm still trying to get, with him to get that data, so I can provide it to the council.
Well, Mr. George, I really feel that you're blowing smoke, uh, because I've been asking about the, um, the cable and meetings being put up on the cable since you've been here, and that's December. But I've been asking for, uh, as far as council members and the mayor knowing since October. So, um, I just really think that that has been put on the back burner. I see you have a lot of things, a lot of irons in the fire, but I don't see that iron in the fire. And so I'm ve- very disappointed, and I want the citizens of Glen Arden to know that they've been neglected, that they have been, uh, kept out, uh, kept in the dark, and that I, I believe that, at this point in time, I believe that it's been on purpose. So, uh, again, I'm extremely disappointed that nothing has been done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson, is there any other questions for Mr. George?
Madam President?
Councilman Herring?
Yes, this three million dollars that you're talking about, did we, have we received any background information? Has this council received any background information on that? This is the first I'm hearing of it, I mean, I heard some word of it, but I haven't seen any paperwork on it? Have we received any paperwork on that?
Uh, it was mentioned last week, I can certainly, for, like I said, there, there's very, very little information out. I can certainly send you the summary report that, uh, Mr., that Representative Hoyer put out on his website. But the sum total of information we have is about two pages, and it's very, very general and, um, really does not provide info, but I'd be more than happy to provide that. We were, we were hoping to have more specific information, um, to provide you with some real guidance, uh, but that has not come out yet. But I'll, I'll make a note to get that out to you all, uh, first thing tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Herring, any other questions?
I have a question, so, Mr. George, so you're telling me that nobody on the council knew, knows anything about this, um, three million dollars? You're the only one who knows about it?
Look, it came out a few weeks ago and has been in the news and been discussed, um, on multiple sources, um.
My question to you.
Like I said, we, we don't have, we don't have any specific information. Uh, like I said, originally it was five point one three, and then it dropped to three and a half. And we're still, we still don't really know enough of what it is and what's going to come out and, and what information will be there, so um, I will certainly send you what we have, um, like I said, it's about a page and a half, two pages of a general summary, uh, from Hoyer and Brown as to, uh, the possible uses of it. But at this point, the details are very, uh, are very thin.
Okay, so you don't think that any of that information should have been provided to, to the council, whether it's been out in the news or wherever, at all?
Well, certainly.
You being the city, you being the city manager, don't you think that you should have informed us?
Of course. My apologies.
Thank you, thank you.
Now, I have a quick question concerning that, those monies. Now, isn't that the monies that was, um, is that part of that monies that, that was discussed at PG CMA? Or was that some other monies they were talking about?
I was, I was in that meeting, but mo, probably was, I mean, that is the last big tranche of money to, to come from the feds, in the la, you know, the last, in the last couple of weeks.
All right, thank you, any other questions for the city manager?
The mayor has his hand up, actually.
No, I just wanted to help clarify that, uh, the city manager and myself were aware of this, uh, lo, loan that was being granted out by the state. And so, uh, we were just staying informed internally, we do not have any detailed information as to how the state will allocate the money to the county and the county in turn allocating it to the cities. Uh, so they're still in the planning process, uh, but hopefully we'll hear something either this week or next week, hopefully. Uh, so, to be honest with you, uh, Councilwoman Wilson, there was no intentions of keeping the council in the dark, we wouldn't, we wanted to have our information together first before we detailed the information with the council, and right now, we don't have that information.
Thank you, Mayor Estes.
Council President?
Council, Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes, um, however, the, the, um, the city manager has a report that he sent out, and he could have did a one-line blurb on, in that and could have said, we'll be getting the information back to you. The mayor had a report, he could have put a one-line blurb, blurb in there about, we should be expecting something or whatever, and, uh, we will be providing the information coming forth. That's what I'm saying, so there should be transparency. There really should be some transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson, and, uh, Mr. George, I'll just, a follow-up, uh, you will send out that little bit of information that you do have to the council on tomorrow morning.
Madam President? Madam President?
Thank, thank you, Mr. George, Mr. Herring?
Yeah, I just want to ask a question, because the mayor made a statement, I'm just, he said loan, is this a loan or is this a grant? What is it?
It's, it's a grant.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
It's, it's a grant.
Okay, thank you.
Right, is there any more questions for the city manager? Hearing none, we'll move into the police, uh, the chief of police report, uh, I think Captain Jackson will be the presenter of that report tonight, Captain Jackson?
Good evening, everyone, how are you?
Well, thank you.
Uh, real, you have a copy of the chief report, I'll be brief. Except, on February the ninth, there was a suicide about eleven, twenty hours. A twenty-year-old male resident who lives on Piedmont Avenue placed a plastic bag over his head that was attached to a helium tank. Officers arrived on the scene, performed CPR until the fire EMS arrived, and he was pronounced on the scene. On February the fifteenth, the Glen Arden Police assisted the Prince George's County Police with a carjacking, excuse me, a vehicle was stolen in Hydesville by Glen Arden residents. Our officers observed the vehicle on White Oak Lane and pursued it into the thirty-two-hundred block of Hubbard Road. There was one arrest and recovery of a handgun. On February the twenty-fourth, at the Best Buy at Woodmore Town Center, reported that approximately eleven, twenty hours, two, two male juveniles entered the store and began to steal video games. When they were approached by a law prevention officer, they displayed a black handgun and left the store with the video games. The security officer notified an off-duty county officer who was working part-time in the store an hour later. There were no injuries, and the case is being handled by the county police. On March the second, I was on a Zoom meeting with Mr. Wayne McBride, who represents the Prince George's County Communications, and he spoke about the scheduling, the reprogramming of our police radios around mid-March. And he, and also mentioned that, uh, we had to contact them to schedule an indoor tour of the range that's located in. an indoor tour of the range that's located in Upper Marlboro, right up the road from the detention center. And as of yet, we haven't had our radios reprogrammed. On March the third, I was invited to a roundtable briefing Zoom meeting with the Prince George's County State's Attorney Office and, and other municipal agencies and officials were invited. Ms. Braithboy introduced their staff, and they explained their individual roles. And Councilwoman Herring was also on a Zoom meeting. On March the tenth, I went on a scheduled tour of the new Prince George's County Indoor Farm Range. And there will be a cost for the municipal agencies to use this facility. And the range will be open year-round, twenty-four seven, only for law enforcement personnel. On March the nineteenth, the FBI reported today that Glen Arden ranks as third safest city in the state of Maryland. And in reference to the most recent homicide that occurred on our Glen Arden Parkway, there has not been an arrest to our knowledge at this particular time. I do know they were in the process to obtain an arrest warrant for an individual, but we don't know who that was. And that's the end of the chief's report.
Thank you, Captain Jackson. Are there any questions from the council to the captain concerning the chief's report?
Council President.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
I was trying to get a question in for the city manager, but some kind of way, I guess you didn't hear me. I have a question for the city manager. Mr. George.
Councilwoman Smallwood, let's finish with the chief first, and then we'll, we'll circle back to you with, with Mr. George. Are there any other questions from the council to the captain concerning the chief's report? All right, hearing none. Councilwoman Smallwood. Your question to Mr. George.
Mr. George, I'm looking in your report, and your report said that the city gave away three hundred and fifty bags of the PPEs. When are we going to have another giveaway to give, to give rid of the rest of the PPEs?
Well, we're going to hopefully schedule that for, for April. We're also thinking, we had chatted about giving away PPE bags to people that come to in-person voting as well. But we're, we're waiting for the weather to get a little bit warmer. It kind of got unseasonably cold, and we were hoping to wait for the weather to really kind of warm up. So maybe end of April might be a good time so we can get enough warm weather, and folks will come out and get the bags.
So are you going to, how would they be notified?
I think we'll do, we'll do postcards, but this time we're not going to do the bulk rate zip code postcards. We'll, we'll use the mailing address system that we're using for the election, and then the postcards will actually go to the individual residential addresses and not the bulk mail that, that we kind of found to be ineffective than the last time we did it. We will, of course, put the information out on the TV channel, on the website, and on our social media feeds.
Okay, so when you're sending out the, the postcards, are you sending it to everyone or to only the people who did not receive their PPEs?
Well, we're thinking about sending them to everyone, but we can go through that list and subtract out the the three hundred and fifty that, that got their, the bags already. We, we have a tremendous number of PPE left, so we could, whichever way the council wants to go, we, we could go either way.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam President.
Councilman Herring.
Yeah, it's just to follow up on Ms. Smalls' question on the PPEs. Mr. George, if you're going to use a voter registration, the voter registration only has about nineteen hundred homes on it, and there's twenty-two hundred homes in Glen Arden. So I think you're going to need to find something else that's going to pick up that addition of three hundred homes of people who are not registered in Glen Arden. So just to let you know that.
I appreciate that, but we, we, obviously, the, the list that we got, we were, the generic list by zip code really didn't work well at all for a great number of people. So that's why we're trying to find a different, a different set. But we, if there's another, if you've got suggestions on how to pick up those other three hundred, I would, I'd love to hear. Just shoot me an email, and, and we certainly don't want to leave anybody out.
Right.
If there's a way to grab those other three hundred, I'd love to chat with you about it.
I, I, I'll shoot you an Excel file. I, I have a listing of those. I think of all the homes in, in Glen Arden, so.
For it to, all right. Thank you very much. That'd be very helpful.
Okay.
All right, so that concludes the chief of police's report. The city treasurer's report, that report is in process. Mr. George will present that when it's prepared.
Yes, he presented at a special meeting, or he going to present it at the work section? At the regular meeting?
Mr. George, will the treasures, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, the hope is that we can have it prepared for the, for the next meeting, for the work, for the regular meeting next week. He's having to go back through and work through some of the previous statements, previous months were not closed out. And he and Ms. Young are working diligently to close out those in the system. So the report they produce is inaccurate year-to-date, and he, they're working on that now.
Thank you. All right. So now we'll move into topics of discussion. And the first topic of discussion is Director of Public Works. The PD for for that. The city manager and the human resource person had been advertising this job. There was some question as the council not receiving the information concerning the Director of Public Works. You have the PD in your packet this month, so I think, Mr. George, did you want to say something about this?
Sure. Anyway, you can go.
I don't have a copy of the PD for the public works in my, in my package. So can you make sure I get a copy?
Yes, ma'am. I, I apologize. I think I might have printed the one off of the web, and that one didn't have it included. I'll make sure you get a copy. I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Well, just, just in general, the, and Karen can jump in on this too, the, the purpose of the, of the Public Works Director position is to add a management level to that department because we want to start seeing that department expand its capabilities and its, and its work. One of the things we have talked about, and obviously this would go through council, and if there's budget ramifications, we would certainly run that through you ahead of time. But for instance, snow removal, that's something we are, you all have seen a number of very large invoices this year from our snow removal contractor. If we were to outfit our existing trucks with plows and get the gentlemen training, we could greatly reduce the amount of money that we're spending on snow removal. I think we're spending a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty dollars an hour per person doing the snow removal, where if we paid our guys overtime, that rate would be greatly reduced, plus we'd be able to give our employees a little bit of overtime money, so the benefit would go to our current staff and not a contractor. So, but that's one of the things. There are some other areas where we'd like to expand what Public Works could do. Right now, they're doing a fantastic job of maintaining this, of what they're doing now. But I feel like in terms of having that management capability to do better inventory control, for instance, better fleet management control, looking at snow removal, I think you need a, a management level person, and it could be one of the people we have on staff. We are not discounting anyone, but we are thinking that you need someone that's on the management level to, to kind of think downrange and, and in the long run, save the city money and provide greater service and value to our residents.
Madam President.
Councilman Herring.
So I, I guess, so what, where's the funding going to come? First of all, I have a whole issue with this old Director of Public Works because the position says it's inactive, that's the first thing. Second thing is that it should not be in the budget because it is inactive, and there's no money been appropriated for, for thirteen years. So to sit there and say it was approved, it was not actually approved, but that's another question for the Attorney General office in the violating the Maryland State Code for approving municipal budgets. But I just want to say, where is the funding going to come from for this position?
Well, a good, a good portion of it will come from, right now, we have a field supervisor and an assistant field supervisor. We would not fill both of those positions going forward. So we would, I think that, I need to check, I don't have the numbers directly in front of me, but if the assistant field supervisor position remained unfilled and that became inactive, the forty or fifty thousand dollars that that person is being paid would then go into the director's line item. So you'd really only need to add the, the difference between where we hire the director and what we're now, what we would no longer be paying an assistant field supervisor, because I don't think you need all three. You don't need that level of management, but if we want to be able to provide greater service and greater efficiency to the city and, and all of our peers, I think you need a, I think you need a director position that can look downrange at, at ways to improve city services.
Okay, now, a follow-up question to that. So what, basically what you're doing is you're going to eliminate a working position and put in a management position at the height of grass cutting season. So that means less people to maintain the city property.
Well, right now, that position is vacant anyway, and the, the director would certainly have the skills and the ability to go out and provide those services as needed. Where I worked previously, when, when the guys needed extra help, the assistant director and the director got in the truck and went out there and got the work done. This isn't an office-only position, but it does allow the city to move forward, look downrange, and provide different services and really hopefully save us money in the long run.
Okay, I don't see anything in his job description that says he has to go out there and cut grass, and I, I found it, I, I, I think it's going to be very highly unlikely you get somebody at that level, say they're going to go out there and cut some grass. That's why we went with a working supervisor, because we need the bodies out there in the field to cut this grass and, and grass cutting season, do some other maintenance throughout the city, picking up trash and everything. So we're going to be down a whole body at the height of grass cutting season. With no, with no, with no spot to be filled to bring that person back up. So you're going to lose basically a person, because you're not going to get a director that's going to go out there, and I don't care what you say, to go out there and cut nobody's grass, and they're not going to be expecting to go out there and cut the grass at that level. So, and like I said, I still have a several problem with y'all trying to fill this position. And like I said, again, it has, we, there's no been, there's been no discussion about the classification, salary, none of that stuff has been addressed with this council, and the council has not approved any of that. And like I said, I still have a problem with the way this is going, because again, that position has not been filled for thirteen years, and to sit there and say it's been approved in the budget, it has not been approved in the budget, it's been approved in the budget as an inactive position. That's what it was, that's what it came across as. Every other position that we are going to fill says proposed, and that, that says inactive. So I'm just saying, I think we, we, we're going to end up losing out on this one because we're not going to have enough people out here. So when the complaints come in by grass cutting not getting done, you know, like I say, we don't have a position now because it was winter time, we didn't need it. You know, you know, but, but when the grass start growing, I mean, the city has a lot of grass, a lot of pieces of property that have to be maintained, parks and everything else that have to be maintained. So that's my feeling on that. All right, thank you.
Council President, I have a question.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
Mr. George, I think my question is more for clarity. That I understand that you said you was going to use the salary of the supervisor that the position is vacant, and then you was going to use the salary of the assistant field supervisor to compensate for the salary for the director personnel?
Well, yes, we, the, the authorities that we don't need both an assistant field supervisor and a field supervisor. So the position that is not filled, we would use that salary and move that over into the director's line item so that the net that we would have to add on to the budget would, would come from, would, would, would only would be minimal based on, so it's not bringing on a brand-new, a full position, you're bringing kind of on, bringing a kind of a half position on, and you're getting rid of a position.
So you would be getting rid of the assistant field supervisory position, correct? So that person is, that position is already filled. So so if you get rid of that position, what are you going to do with the person that's in that position?
Well, that position could, that person could move into the, he's now the acting field supervisor, he could remain as the field supervisor. He has also applied for the director position and could possibly move into that position as well. There are no plans to remove that position. I think he's a fantastic employee, and he does a great job. So there's no plans at all to remove him, but we'll just see how the, you know, the application and the review process goes to see how the staff fits together.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilwoman Eason.
Yeah. For these positions, are they, are these positions that you're proposing in the FY twenty twenty-two budget that you're delivering tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
And that balances. So there are funds in the FY twenty-two budget, in a balanced budget, to cover the recommendations we're putting forth.
Okay, so basically, we haven't heard any of these proposals because we haven't seen the budget yet.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Madam President.
Councilman Herring.
Okay, so why are we even discussing this tonight if, if it's for the twenty twenty-two budget? I thought y'all were doing this for the twenty twenty-one.
Due to the fact that the council had, like I said, the position had been advertised, and due to the fact that council members said that they hadn't seen the position description for a Director of Public Works, we put it on as a topic of discussion so that it will be discussed or be brought to your attention.
So let me ask a question. So are you hiring somebody for this twenty twenty-one budget year? Is that what you're looking?
Ms. Schultz has her hand up. She can answer that.
Good afternoon. More than likely, no. By the time we re-advertise this job, because as council indicated, they had not seen the position description, we, we pulled the job back. So by the time we re-advertise it, go through it, it will probably not be filled until July at the earliest. I haven't even done anything else to it. So no, we, I personally can safely say that I will not have the information for Mr. George or anybody else during this budget year.
Okay, let me ask a question then. So what is it, what? So you're bringing him on as an exempt employee, that's correct?
Yes.
Okay. And what salary are you trying to bring this person on at?
I think the salary, Tim, I don't have any of the information with me. Do you have with you the exact salary we had determined?
It's not on my PD, but we were thinking in the kind of the sixty-five, seventy-five range.
Right, right.
Okay, so you're thinking on that, okay. All right, so, okay, all right. You know what? I don't even know. I see, this should be, this should be a discussion when we, when the budget is submitted, if that's what y'all bringing it.
Well, the issue, the issue is that we need, we needed you all, since there was a complaint and an issue before, we needed the PD approved so that when we bring it forth for the budget the next time, we don't have to delay again because you all haven't had a chance to look at the, and approve the, the position description.
Right.
Because that would have been, when you submitted the budget, you would have submitted all of this stuff with it at the same time. You could have went through it, you know what I mean? It's still going to be the discussion held on it. I mean, so, but, okay, I'm, 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 I'm good. I'm good.
It still familiarizes you with the position. That's what's coming forth, you know, since it is an item that it will bring questions, the questions that we're having and the conversation that we're having. As far as the classification, Ms. Schultz, have you done the classification on this?
What we have looked at as the, it would fall What we have looked at as the, um, it would fall in the management classification, if, that's why it's exempt. Um, it will probably, it will be a working manager to what total degree is unknown based on the person's skills coming into the job. Um, so we're looking at it being a management position and public works.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions concerning the, um, Director of Public Works PD? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next, um, item, which is, uh, the pay grant information. Pay grant information, uh, was not provided to the council, and I wanted it to be present, presented tonight. That, uh, the information concerning the pay grant the council was aware of. Uh, Mr. George, would you like to kind of give them a summary of what you found concerning the pay grant?
There's the, the resident on a couple of meetings had requested information on this and it had not been presented. Uh, so Council President asked that I kind of produce the information that had been given to me, um. So in short, the, um, at least in the January, um, report that you got from the, from the treasurer, um, it showed that the, the, the peg monies, it was, we had two hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars in the peg account. Um, the audit report, um, and other documents show that we have four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in the peg fund. Obviously, that's a big discrepancy. Um, and really, the issue is that we, uh, at some point, yeah, the money had been deposited into a peg fund specifically, and at some point, they, the treasurer stopped depositing it into the peg fund and putting it into the general fund, but keeping track of the peg monies, um, in a line, um, we're kind of virtually in a, in a journal entry line, I have not in the actual fund. And I had asked, and I know the, the resident had asked for kind of detailed when the money had been deposited and when it had been taken out. We still really did not receive that, but I did forward to the Council President the information that the treasurer had provided in terms of how much money we have. The reason for this, of course, is that we are trying to upgrade our TV studio and put in new equipment, and we were trying to get a handle on how much money we had, not even, even if we had only two fifty-nine, we're not gonna spend two hundred and sixty thousand dollars on the studio, uh, but we wanted to get a good sense for how much money we had, and we did not really receive that, so I wanted to just provide what information I did have to the President so she could provide it to you all if you had any questions, um, especially as it relates to how much money we have available to, um, upgrade the TV studio.
All right, is there any, any questions concerning the pay grant? Councilwoman Eason?
Yeah, did you have all this written down in a document?
Um, no, I mean, we didn't, I, the, I never got a summary document from the treasurer explaining all this, I just have basically four or five different documents that I pulled together, uh, one was from the audit report, one was from his January report, uh, one was from the actual fund report, just uh, together, I, I, I think they're in the packet, but I could certainly pull them together and send them to you, but uh, there is no summary narrative that, that describes it.
Okay, right, thanks.
Councilman Williams?
Um, may I adjust the city manager, please?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. George. Roughly, if I'm right, do we have, what is our reserves? How much money we have in total savings, and then how much is restricted savings?
Uh, let's see. Well, I had to double check, and I'm looking at the, the report, we've got it's, well, these are kind of older numbers, let's see, um, kind of the, on, the, the operating account, general funds, on one thirty-one, two twenty-one, we had a six point six million. Uh, the, I only have one, the, the page of the report I have doesn't show restricted versus unrestricted, but it does show the the total amount in the general fund at six point six. And then we have other funds, so I can, I can produce that.
It's written, according to audit, it was somewhere around eight million dollars. Total savings.
Yeah, that's, I think that's about right, but, but again, I, I only have a handful of documents, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, I say it to say our budget is around what, four point two, four point three million? And according to standard, um, what should our rainy day fund be? Of our percentage, around twenty-five percent of our budget, max thirty, right?
I, I mean, it's a decision that all councils make for themselves, how much it, it should be, it ought to be at least, at least twenty-five to thirty percent would be a minimum, but, you know, councils of, can decide how much rainy day fund they want to hold back.
But I'm just saying, generally, general accounting practices are general standard for most councils between, and state governments, is twenty to twenty-five or thirty percent.
I would think so.
Okay. Now, I, I, I bring, I bring this to your attention because um, we talking about position here, a position there. We are taxing our citizens, and we have almost eight million dollars savings. Our budget is four million dollars and some change. And I, I think last I heard it was five to six million dollars on restricted. So that says the one thing we're doing, we were overtaxing or underspending, or both. And that needs to be addressed. And I like that to be addressed in the, 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 the upcoming budget because if, there's no need to have so much money in savings when standard practice is twenty-five to thirty percent. And we have almost, according to total, maybe almost two hundred percent of our budget and savings. So I just want you to take a look at it, you can talk to other city managers, county officials, state officials, and see a plan how we can address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Are there any other questions concerning the pay grant information?
Yes, Madam President.
Councilman Herring?
Yes, okay, I'm looking at this report that's attached to this pay grant, and it's from July two thousand thirteen to September twenty twenty, saying four sixty-six, so you're basically saying that two hundred and some odd thousand dollars, two hundred and is that? Nine thousand, ten thousand dollars are, is in, um, general, the general bank account that need to be transferred over to PAG? Because that's what it looks like what's happening here. The money comes in the general fund, in the, in the gen, to the general fund, general revenue account, general operating account. So you're saying the transfer needs to be down out of general operating into PAG, to bring that number to what it should be?
Well, correct, because as you know, sir, the, the peg monies are restricted, and they can only be used for certain things. And if we lose track of how much is in PAG versus in general fund, then we cannot, we could actually spend peg money on unpeg funds, and if there was an audit, I, I don't know that there would be, but if there ever was an audit um, by the, for the franchise agreements, then uh, we could, we could be in default and have to repay some of that money if we were to be found to spend it incorrectly.
Okay, so I'm just saying, looking at that, that'll take out general fund account down to about six point three million dollars, and if we're saying, we want, you're saying, so they have anywhere from twenty-five to thirty percent of your money for rainy day. It looks like we basically have fifty percent of our money going toward a rainy day fund, because if our budget is four million dollars and fifty percent of that is two million, so six million dollars to put us on track to have a rainy day fund based on the fifty percent average, um, of what we bought in. But we also got to remember too that we still have a roof, a roof that needs, I mean, not a roof, an elevator that needs to be installed. We got roads that need to be done, and roads are gonna run you about one or two million dollars, based on, um, you know, the last estimates that I saw, because right now we're piecemealing roads together. Um, so, I mean, the problem I'm seeing here is that the city is not providing the services to the citizens that they, that they entitled to. Um, there should be elevating, and so seniors thing, do not have to go up and down those steps, there should be, the roads should be paved. We've paved Ward One, we paved Ward Two, we, we paved pieces of Ward Three, but they entitled to be paved just like the other wards were done, you know, um, so it seems like we're on track to have a fifty percent rainy day fund, it isn't about the city, the city holding people's money, it's about us not spending the money to provide the services to these citizens that they, that they're entitled to, which are good roads and, um, and, uh, access, access to the city building ADA compliance, I mean, we need curb cuts done for wheelchair access, or I see another person rolling in the street, and the wheelchair is gonna drive me crazy because they can't get up on the sidewalk. I mean, so it's just a matter of spending the money on projects that need to be done. Um, that's what I'm seeing. All right, um, thank you.
Madam President.
Councilman Williams?
Mr. George, I go back again, isn't that total, total somewhere around eight million dollars reserves? According to audit, auditor, when she, she told us.
Hey, that's close, but, but again, I apologize, it's, I don't have the audit.
So it's not six million dollars, as the councilman just said, it's total around, total eight million dollars. And we have some restricted funds and unrestricted, and she said there's between five million and six million, uh, unrestricted funds. And I just, I, I only reason why I bring this up, because again, I, as I said before, we either overtaxing or underspending when we have that much money in reserves. And so I'm asking you to come up with a plan to address that. Yes, we need some roads, yes, we need cur, curb cuts. Uh, I had a complaint about speed bump, just like we, we put on Glen Arden Parkway, I was asked to put a speed bump on Polk Street by a former councilperson, Swindell. Uh, uh, because of the traffic, racing up and down Polk Street. So, uh, there's some issues that we can spend, and then we've, then on top of that, we're supposed to be getting another three point one million dollars in COVID money. And what's going to be the plan with that, based on restriction spending on certain things? So a comprehensive plan needs to be dealt with. If we can't spend some of the money, we need to get some tax relief, and that's what I'm just saying. We have to look at the big picture because, and realistic, we shouldn't be having a fifty percent, a hundred percent, should be around twenty to twenty-five percent reserves and handling our business and providing services, uh, we under providing our services to the city. I appreciate you looking at that, thank you very much.
Madam President, may I?
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Councilman Herring?
Let me just say, so citizens can be quite clear, the audit is, is until, was reported until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. We're now in April, I mean, if, I'm sorry, the audit was from, till June twenty twenty, we're now in April twenty twenty-one. We spent money from July to April, so that eight million dollars that they're saying we had as of June is no longer there. We spent money down, we paid salaries, we paid everything. Even looking at the accounts we have now, we're probably at about seven point three million dollars, about Minnesota, that dollars is restricted with highway user PAG and, um, other restricted funds, so, um, it is not eight million dollars there, we've been spending money down. You can't go back with the auditor said in June because we've been spending money from June from July first until April. So, I mean, this is, this is realistic. Um, it's, it's less than that, and you look at your general fund account, which is where, which is where, which is where your unrestricted money is at, and it's at six point three million dollars. You still gotta take out two hundred and seven thousand dollars of that, that belongs to PAG. Then you got highway user fund, which is restrictive. You know, so we got, I mean, I'm just being realistic with this, you know, we need to spend money to provide these services to the citizens. Princeton, I mean, Glen Arden residents are, have the lowest tax rate, second lowest tax rate than any other municipality in the, in the state of Maryland. So, I mean, it isn't like we're, we're gouging the citizens, we're just not using what we have, and that's in, that's a reflection on us as, as, as officials in, um, and moving our government forward. I mean, we've tried to get roads done, we've tried to get elevators in, you know, but you know, some, there's always something going on, but you need good leadership to do that. So, thank you.
All right, is there any other questions concerning the, um, pay grant information?
I have a question.
Councilwoman Eason?
Yeah, so when, um, since we mentioned in the audit, I know one of the things that the auditor was gonna give us was her binder. Did we ever receive those? The final binder that she gives us that has the audit information? Because I know she went through the electronic copy, we reviewed, we actually approved the audit, but it's one more thing, she normally gives us a, a bound, a bound copy of the audit, so that we have that for our records. Did we ever receive that?
She did mention that, that, but I haven't seen it. I will send her an email in the morning and ask her, uh, if she sent it, and then if she sent it, where it was sent to.
Okay, right, thanks.
You're welcome. Any other questions concerning the pay grant? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to our last topic of discussion, which is the Maglev train, public comments, Councilwoman Eason.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, um, a citizen, um, sent me an email just as a reminder because they're keeping tabs on the Maglev train. And actually, um, the District Three County Councilperson.
Danielle Glarus?
Danielle Glarus actually had a meeting last Tuesday, and, um, she actually has a, a presentation as well that gives more information about what's happening now. I know when Glen Arden had the train, it was like ten routes, um, and now it's two routes, but that route is going through Bladensburg, through Goring Belt, and some other places. So, um, she just wanted folks to know that there's public comment uh, time where you can make a comment that says you're not in support of the Maglev train. And only because even though, um, the train is not, one of those routes are not coming through Glen Arden anymore, they're still going through your neighboring communities where it may impact Glen Arden, whether or not it's, uh, vehicles you know, going through the roads, you know, to damage the roads, and with the equipment, um, the parts, it's about eight parts that's gonna be, that may be impacted. Um, a lot of ground, uh, dirt that has to be excavated and, and taken somewhere. So, uh, once again, I couldn't capture everything from the presentation, but the main thing is that, um, you actually have your oral testimony that you can provide public hearings, April sixth, April eighth, April tenth. But if you can't make any of those, make sure you go to the Maglev website and include your comment before May twenty-fourth. You can always write your comment that says you do not agree with the Maglev. You know, I know, you could just say, I didn't agree with it in the Glen Arden, and I don't agree with it over here, and just, um, make sure you make your comments so that they're documented it. So I want to thank the citizen that sent me that information, and the website, if you don't know what it is, is, um, W W W dot D W Maglev dot info. Is where you can submit your email to make a comment and say that you're, um, still in opposition to the train, because they're still working on it. They're still, once again, they have two sites, and then also they have the no build option. So you can, you know, so just make your comment so that, um, they have it documented. That's all that I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Eason.
Madam President.
Councilman Herring?
It's just a follow-up on what Ms. Eason said, because I have, I was, um, the one that found out about it when I went to the four fifty coalition meeting years ago when we spoke out on it and spoke out against it, and I think it would be good if the citizens do reach out because they did come out and support us when it was gonna come through Glen Arden. So I think that'd be a good idea, and also just reading their plan, they actually, and one of the biggest issues was that they weren't, that there was not gonna be a station in Prince George's County. Now they're proposing to have a station in Prince George's County on a parking lot of Eleanor Roosevelt High School. And a ticket to go into DC is gonna cost you a hundred dollars from, from that station, and to go into Baltimore, it'd be three hundred dollars. So again, that's not even feasible for anybody to use, I mean, it's just a waste of time, and now they're doing a lot of aerial building versus tunneling, so they're tunneling under people's homes, and then they're coming up above them. So it's just, it's, it's, the whole thing is a big mess, I don't see where the city, where the, where the county needs it. I don't see why it's being done, but I think it'd be a good idea if citizens do go to that website and make their comments, because again, they did come out and they did support us when we were speaking out against it, and I think we should do the same for them.
And then one more thing, um, to follow on with Mr. Herring. They did mention that also Brooks was against the train coming through.
Right.
Whereas when we had to fight it, the, um, county was in support of it, um, for Sharon Baker, I think was in support of it, but also Brooks, she did mention that she was, um, against the train, she was in opposition to it. So, um, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Eason. Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I was on the, um, last Tuesday, I was on that, um, that Zoom call, and, um, again, um, like it was said, it's actually coming through Prince George's County, I mean, we have to I mean, we have to think about the air quality, they're talking about tearing down, um, our trees and stuff, which is help with our air quality and oxygen. They've even talked about, um, using the, which is very, very close, we can walk there, Landover Mall area to, uh, for their storage.
Station.
Station.
Mm-hmm. And, and Landover, um, and that's pretty much right across the street from our Glen Arden Hills. Um, and that's a lot of traffic going back and forth and we don't know, I mean, the storage, I don't know if they'll be using chemicals to clean and everything else. So again, uh, it was really, I advised everybody to send those emails and, um, that we against it, period. Just, you know, our neighboring cities and municipalities and just the fact that it's coming through our fine Prince George's, um, county. Um, so, and they said, you know, right on all levels, federal, um, state, county, and this, um, your opposition. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Ferguson.
Council President.
Councilwoman Smallwood.
Uh, I'm in agreement with what everybody said, but I think the last time, uh, when we wrote a letter, we wrote a letter in as one body from the council to let them know that we were, we were in opposition of this. So, uh, I think we need to do that again.
Councilwoman Eason.
Yeah, actually, I was council president during that time and I, I did write that letter and it was sent out. But then also, Ms. Smallwood, they also want people to send individual letters as well. Because seeing one letter from several council members and mayor is different than seeing 100 letters from citizens. So, uh, each, each of them have their weighted, but I think they will see 100 letters from individual citizens as being, wow, they really don't want this here, just like when we had that public forum. They saw people come out and voice their opposition firsthand. But that's something that could be done again as well.
All right. All right, so that concludes our topic of discussion for, uh, the Maglev. That, and in fact, concludes our topics of discussion. So with the council and the administration. It is now 8:34 and that should conclude or adjourn our work session for April 5th. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Have a good day tomorrow.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night, good night, everyone.